This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Calling to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board from May 7th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And if you could stand inside the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a quorum right now. We are expecting our other two members, Joy and Stephen. So in order not to delay things, we will just get started here. Do we have any citizens speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, Robert, please.
Hi, Robert Floyd, College Highway. Speaking as a citizen, Ed Nee Jr.'s birthday is today, and we had a lot of pomp and circumstances. He was the fellow who was killed by a bear that jumped on his motorcycle.
Yep.
Maybe 2016. And we dedicated a memorial for him at the Zipta property with a beautiful display of photos. And that veneer is coming off, and it needs to be repaired. The Conservation Commission voted three years ago to fund it. It hasn't been funded. I would like your representatives to come on to bring it up and explain it under each other.
Yeah. Do you know when you did it last time, did you guys pull together?
Sorry?
When you guys had the whole, did you guys have a company that was doing it?
The companies in Westfield, they're already doing it. They had COVID problems themselves, so.
Would Brittany Eller know about it?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Brittany Eller know about it? Okay, thank you. Good. And that would have been from their revolving funds or something, or?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I do know three years ago, I looked at their minutes, they approved the funding for it.
Okay.
And the second thing is for tonight, would you be willing to nominate a town clerk?
To call for the night? Would you have anything for me to nominate?
Yeah.
Okay. I just don't want to randomly pick somebody out of the audience.
Dead life of things. Who was it? Sabina McCarthy.
Sabina.
She's the Assistant Town Clerk.
Sabina McCarthy? So she will act as town clerk?
I'll ask for nominations. John will nominate. I might say any other nominations, hearing those nominations. And then I'll sway her in. Thank you.
All right. Let's remember, we'll do that right at the very beginning, or you'll give us a signal on that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Robert. There you go. Whatever you want. Thanks, John. Okay, all right. Good, anybody else? Okay, let's move into, I think we have some appointments here. Show the agenda at least. Our appointments, we have an appointment from the Southampton Democratic Town Committee for Mary Ann Carrasco. This is the Democratic representative to fill the vacancy on the Board of Registrawers.
Both you two approve.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Hi, Stephen. Okay. I'm going to do the PCFs first and then come back to the town meeting preparation. That may just be easier to do. We have a few PCFs tonight.
Let's see. Each of them has some cases.
Go through here.
Less four.
So we have, first of all. First ones we have, hold on here, we have.
Would you like motion?
Well, this is, what do we see? We've got PCFs for the Fire Department, new hire. For Tyler Garfield. And Mackenzie Williamson. There's two. Let's take them two by two in terms of the departments. So.
I wasn't at the meeting either. Are they all signed up and approved by QPP?
They are signed by Jen, yeah.
Okay. I move to approve both Tyler Garfield, Fire Department, new hire PT, nonbenefit, as needed, firefighter, paramedic, rate of 2479 per hour. As well as Mackenzie Williamson, Fire Department, increased to 25.26 per hour, paramedic, paramedic, firefighter, class one, class two.
Second.
And to incorporate any changes that QPP may have made in no one adult forms.
Correct. They have submitted their certifications as part of their backup information, so yeah. Motion and a second? Yes. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Those two are approved. Next up, we have a resignation, I'll just say that one, a resignation of Amy Sugahara, volunteer coordinator at the Council on Aging, effective date, May 4th.
Motion to accept the resignation.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Next up, so this is a.
Pamela Connet?
Yeah, Pamela Connet, yeah.
Temporary increase in hours because of vacancy.
Correct, yeah. Okay, temporary increase. I assume it's up to four, from 14, up to 24 hours a week, is that it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and this is to cover the volunteer coordinator position until that one is filled. Let's just understand this. This is coming from the. Some of, oh, so nine hours, as I'm reading the form here. Nine hours, Scott, you can look at it, please. Nine hours is coming from the operating budget? Fifteen hour, up to 15 hours is coming from the state formula grant.
Yes. COA operating budget, nine hours, state formula grant, up to 15.
Okay, see, let's go.
Because it's temporary and it's 12. Can I ask the treasurer a question?
Certainly.
Because it's temporary and 12 weeks, that's not going to trigger benefits?
It could trigger health insurance.
Only for that 12-week period?
Right.
It's because it's going over 20, if they're consistently over 20?
If she goes over 20.
Yeah.
So maybe it's up to 24, so.
But this is an up to 24, is it?
Yeah, so they would, I mean. It would really probably have to be consistently over 20.
For a period of time?
Yeah.
It should be the ACA lookback period. Yep, others, 12 months or whatever.
I'll move to approve it in discussion. We need the motion. I'll second your motion.
Okay. Yep. So we have second. Any further?
Is it a good amount of insurance?
Which usually, like a rolling 26-week look.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I thought, I thought the next, the pair of minutes, two, we already, we already accepted those resignations.
We have accepted the resignations already on Sally Bastian's, the Treasurer Collector. And Lexie Richard, the Treasurer Collector. Those resignations, I believe we did at our last meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
The forms weren't submitted yet to personnel.
The forms had not been signed?
They're still just not signed by the board yet.
Okay, well, let's do those then in formality, so that we have all the.
I move that we ratify our prior action accepting Sally Bastian's Treasurer Collector Department resignation from her position as Assistant Treasurer, effective April 18th, 2024. And resignation of Lexie Richard, Administering Assistant, effective April 25th, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. We'll get those signed. All right, next up, we have two, for the same person, for the Treasurer Collector Department, Admin Treasurer Collector Department. Do you want to read those?
I make a motion to approve Sandra Massimano, Treasurer Collector Department Emergency Appointment, Admin Treasurer Collector Clerk, part-time, hourly rate of $18.21. In addition, same individual, same position, same pay for permanent placement. I'll make the motion for a discussion.
Okay, a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Joy?
Yeah, the original. For permanent placement, the agenda says temporary.
Oh, temporary.
So we have an emergency appointment, just to clarify, this is a two-week appointment? Emergency, two-week appointment?
Yep.
Right, yeah.
Starting?
April 29th.
April 29th.
And then at the conclusion of that, it moves into a temporary appointment, not to exceed 12 weeks.
Not to exceed 12 weeks. Okay. And this position, I believe, is already advertised, so.
Correct.
You may or may not have other applicants, or she also may apply to that, is correct.
She won't apply now. She's retired from the city of East Hampton. She's just hopping out.
Okay.
But she has no interest in working regularly again. Yeah.
I wouldn't blame her. Somebody's retired to come back in. Okay. So if we understand this correctly, so we have a two-week appointment, emergency appointment, and a not to exceed 12-week temporary appointment while this position is being recruited.
That's my motion.
And this is up to, just to clarify, for anybody listening here, this is up to 20, sorry. 16 to 20 hours a week, up to 20 hours a week?
Mm-hmm.
Correct, okay. Up to 20 hours a week at a salary of $18.21 per hour. Any further discussion other than that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Your vote, and now it's a second.
Well, somebody said, Joyce. Anyway. Okay. All right. Let's jump up to the, well, we could, do we have anything, Scott, on old business, anything there?
Not for tonight.
Not for tonight, okay. On the minutes to approve, and we'll go back up to the warrant minute. On the minutes to approve for April and the two for April, I've just noted a few typos, so I'd like to just recommend we hold off on these tonight, rather than going into the minutia and pick them up at our next meeting, if that's okay with everybody?
We do.
Let's table them tonight, so I'll make the motion. To table. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
And just for clarification, since it's the last thing on the agenda, our next board meeting, did we agree to actually be the 23rd, that Thursday? Is it Tuesday, election day?
Right, it's Election Day, so I believe we get.
It's not, it's not posted, but.
Right. I think we said that we could not meet on the 21st, so that needs to be the 23rd because of the election. And I don't know if there was anything else, if we needed an executive session or anything in between or not. Scott will let us know, but I don't know that we do right now.
There may be one more personal action between the board.
Before then? Okay. Well, we shall see. And then I think that's all we have on that. And then the only other thing you have is signatures tonight, just for us to sign the contract for the prior year. We've already gone through it, we just need to actually sign it, so. Pass it. Ooh, well, I don't want all this stuff mixed in here. Hold that for a minute, so I don't mix all this stuff up. All right. So this was the contract, and just to remind everybody, this is effective back June. April 22nd. Three-year contract going back to April 22nd until April 22nd, 2027. Righty, okay, so. There you go. Okay, so let's take up the warrant. So what we normally do, so the copies of the warrant are actually in the other room. We snuck in and registered already, but we can share in between time here, if you bring it back yourself. So as usual, Scott, we go through and just kind of assign who's going to do what. And I think it's just as easy to just go 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right down.
Right, so I was going to say, if you want to start with the first one.
Yep.
Right, you can share one, and then however we end up sitting on the table.
Yes, I think, I think that'll be.
So that would mean one's, Joy, you say.
I'm doing the best I can.
Well, the only thing, you wanted to be the first speaker on one article, so you probably shouldn't.
Right, I'm motioning, no, so let's take a look at how these fall here. So free cash, number one, so.
So in theory, you would be one, and then six.
So. Yeah, so I'll start out, yeah, let's just go down the table as we usually, whoever sits next to me doesn't. Don't matter, I'm at one end and John's at the other, so whoever wants to fill in, whatever, go. So I'll do number one. Who wants number two? Stephen? Joy, anybody? Dan, who do you want?
All right, Joy's one.
Joy, number two. All right.
Clearly, Dan's number three.
Dan, number three.
There's Stephen.
Stephen. John has got five. Now, what I'm going to suggest, John, is that you take, instead of passing the mic all the way down and back, just start and run back up the table. So you take five and six. Because you've got capital and that's part of.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes sense for you.
Throw everybody off.
I know.
Definitely.
All right, Steve, you got the budget.
You want the budget, number seven?
He doesn't have a choice. Steve, all you have to do is just read the motion piece.
Yeah, you're just reading the motion.
We're not creating the budget.
You're just doing, yeah.
Moderator has figured, John.
He does. He's going to help us divide it up.
Dan's going to be eight.
Dan will be.
He'll bail me out.
Joy, nine. So I'll read ten.
Oh, perfect.
Yes, I'll read ten. So I'll read ten. Yeah, so on number 10, guys, just listen, this, on number 10, we're going to pass over, but I will give, Robert was going to ask why, and I will give the reason just from the table. Okay. And then we can go into 11, so somebody else, Stephen, you could read 11, I just want to be the speaker for it, so I don't have to read the article on 11, if you want.
Do you want me to read 11, because I'm right there?
That's fine, whoever wants to be, yep. So Joy on 11. And, well, was, which border will be in?
Dan.
Dan? Dan is 12.
Let's be number 13.
13, Stephen, all right. Is that right, 14?
14 will be me, and then you want me to do 15, the center pattern?
I think so, it seems to work.
It works. I'll get enough talking in one second.
15 is John.
16, yeah, Stephen.
16, Stephen.
17, Dan. Who speaks to the rationale for?
Hang on, we'll get there. Let's just assign this first. Somebody, so, yep, 17 is Dan, yep. Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Correct.
18?
Yeah, handle by law, border rush.
18 is Joy. Joy, and 19?
Chris Tylos.
19 is what?
And then we should be in CPA. All of us.
Almost. So I'll do 19, I guess I would do.
20. zoning?
20, the zoning. Just about do it, sending it right back down the table.
CPA.
And then CPA, they do their own usually. So the only two, we have two more at the very end we have to do, though, after CPA. We have the, so CPA has 21, 22, 23, and 24, we have to pick up 25 and 26.
I can take 25, I don't see that there's 26. Oh, there it is.
Should be.
Yeah, well, they're kind of together. Yeah.
John, you want to do it?
Sure.
25 and six?
Sure.
I don't care, whatever.
We'll handle it all strong.
All right. All right, so that kind of does, so Stephen, your question, who speaks to what? These are.
Is this both your first time at the table?
Second time. Second time.
Second time too, right?
I've only done special.
Yep. So in the, in the article itself, or in the, in where these are, and you see it in here, Scott has put in who would be the speaker to this.
Oh, thanks.
So they're in parentheses here, so sometimes select or town administrator, a lot of these are going to end up probably being Scott. I think, much less, and so forth.
But if you feel strongly about one.
Yeah.
Jump right up there, get there, and do not wait for the moderator to call for people to go up.
Stand up.
Face the moderator and address your comments to the moderator.
To the moderator.
Exactly.
After you.
And be sure that Mike gets loud enough.
The best handle, the 350.
Yeah, now we have to go back.
Oh, to speak to it? Yeah.
So now we have, yeah, so we need to go back. Yeah, so John, I'm assuming you're going to be the speaker on the stabilization fund, the very first one on the Hampshire? Just to recap for people.
Where's the?
Number one.
No, I got that, but is there someone's name in here?
Just says Select Port Town Administrator, it's in the first, it's right in here now. It's just farther down, if you can see it. And then, yeah, so then we need to get some clarity here in terms of the free cash certification did come in. So now we need to talk about these figures that are in your warrant right now, placeholders. And we need to allocate now the amount of monies, and so John has a suggestion.
So free cash got certified about 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock today. Total amount of free cash certification is $953,688 even. We are, well, it is, but remember, you've got that 350 coming back that we borrowed.
Okay.
From operations, so.
Taking that out of there.
So first, we've got to take the 350 out of the 953. And I'll just speak in round numbers, because everybody has this in front of them. Which legal balance is 603, 221. The town has a suggested policy that is not enforceable, but generally, we follow it. Where 30% goes to operational, 35 to capital, and 10 to OPEB. And you'll see those numbers there, so 30 to operational would be $180,000, $60,000 to OPEB. Other post-employment benefits.
Scott, did you hear this?
And then, capital would be 211. That makes up 75% of the remaining free cash, which leaves 25% for the select or discretion.
Dan.
Or 150,805. Point 25, right? So what I propose is, once you move, once we move the 180, once we restore the 350 we borrowed from operations, we put in the new 180 from this year.
Which is our 30% minimum requirement?
The available balance in the operational will be in excess of $1 million, just barely, but it'll be just over $1 million. We seem to be struggling right now with coming up with money to buy capital items, you know? And this isn't enough to cover a street sweeper, but we have plenty of needs out there. We have plenty of cruisers, over 150,000, 170,000 miles on them. I've proposed, we take the remaining 150, and we add it to capital, making it a 60% contribution to capital. If we don't do anything with it, it takes an active town meeting to move the money, so it basically would be frozen until June 30th. And then we'd have to wait for the next free cash certification to get this money. And we don't necessarily have the best track record right now at getting this money ahead of time. So at least by putting it in capital, we still can't spend it without coming back to a special town meeting, but then we have the funding source available to draw the money out. So we would park the money so it doesn't get lost when we close the books.
And can we approve capital monies at special town meetings too?
As long as we go through the capital committee process and all that.
Right.
So I would say for Article 2.
So 35 plus, Article 2 would be?
It's operational, so that number becomes 189,66.30.
Okay.
Right? And then, which, that's that single page handout.
Yeah, that is our 30%, right.
So that number's already in there. Article 3 would be the 211, 127.35, plus the 150, 805.25, which would mean we'd be moving 361,932.6 into that fund. And then Article 4, the OPEB number, would remain at the 60,322.
Which is our 10%.
Yep.
So all we're really doing is putting more of the free cash into the capital stabilization fund, which is something that we, you know, we've usually just tried to split it up fairly evenly, but this is a fair amount of money that, I don't know that we need more than $1 million operational stabilization necessarily, I mean, I think we're up there.
In theory, you're going to tap operational when there's a very unforeseen matter that happens, and it's a one-time thing, and you've just got to stabilize the budget that one year.
Right.
You'd use that. Capital is specifically designed for long-term, one-time purchases. And the fact that we only have $96,000 there, and we had $1,004,000 request, means that we're never getting to where we need to replace these things, and we end up with the fire station the way it is, you know? So while we have the money, we should park it in there, in my view.
Okay, so that would be a proposition from John. Everybody following that, that we keep the 30 and the 10% for the first two, for operation and OPEB, but instead of taking only 35% for the capital stabilization, we take 35 plus the remainder, which is another 25%? So that gives us 60% of our free cash going into capital stabilization. Would anybody have any, well, let's have a, let's, you want to make that a motion, John?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we allocate the remaining 25% to the capital stabilization fund.
Can I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Joy, okay. Any discussion on that? Any pros and cons, questions?
I'm not following the map, I'm sorry, because Article 2 is capital.
Article 2 is the operation?
They both refer to the capitalization, capital stabilization fund, but the summary makes a distinction that there's an operational stabilization.
Is it wrong?
Oh, on the cheat sheet?
Either I don't.
Yeah, there's an error on the cheat sheet.
Okay, well, let's get the cheat sheet correct.
So Article 2 is operations, not capital. In that first sentence.
It says, where are you?
So in the very first sentence, after the amount, to the.
Oh, to the, yeah, to the operational stabilization, not capital, in the very first sentence of Article 2? Thank you, yeah.
And so when there's reference to, this is 60% of our free cash allocated to.
Capital stabilization.
That will happen in Article 3.
Article 3.
And that's only 211.
Because the 211 is the standard 35 that we're putting in there. We're going to change that number.
On the floor.
Yeah.
Well, I, yeah, or.
What he's proposing then is adding the 150, 805-ish?
No.
So that becomes 361, or 932.60.
So the first one is clearly operational.
That amount is right.
Stabilization, the amount, 181.
Yep.
And this Article 3 is about.
Is, the new number will be 361,932.60?
Correct.
To capital stabilization.
I'm all good.
Okay, and then OPEB is correct, the way it was, I believe, right? Yes.
Yeah. Discussion, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah. It makes a good amount of sense. We haven't ever been able to do that, I think, in the past.
And if it makes it easier, I can just, assuming nobody speaks against these things, I can just stand at the mic and just speak to each one, to keep the flow going. Yeah, if you want to, good.
Well, whatever.
Well, the moderator has committed to a $50 wager, should we be get done at 45 minutes. 45 minutes.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion, if not?
Yeah, the comment I would add.
Everybody in favor, or Dan?
Well, the comment I would add, just as a pro for, being in Nora's school, when we asked the principal where they would spend money, where if they had extra money, what they would ask for, for those capital improvements, so. They're putting that, and there's a lot of, it reflects a lot of the feedback we got when we went over and established this budget from different stakeholders in town, as to where we should, where if we had extra money, we would allocate it.
Sure, and I think that's true with Highway and with Police as well, so, absolutely. Okay, all those in favor of that shift?
Aye.
Aye, all right, let's do that. Okay, so with that, let's, so what is in, and Mr. Moderator's listing something, just to reiterate this, so. Scratch off the way Article 2 is written in your booklet, and Article 3, and Article 4, and we'll use this new paper, okay? So I think people will still read the motions as planned, so Joy on 2, Dan on 3.
The text to the motions didn't change, right?
The, yes, it will.
Oh, it did.
So you have to use the handout.
Read the handout, yeah.
Because that has the new money in it. So on number two, let's be sure, on number three, so Joy, you're good at one eighty, I believe that's.
Who says three?
Correct. Three has got Dan. So Dan, your new number.
Dan, just want to make sure you have that number.
Your new number at the bottom, the motion.
Oh, wow, these are. Okay, yeah.
Three sixty-one.
Three, six, one.
Nine thirty-two.
Nine, three, two.
And sixty cents. Okay, and then.
Okay.
Steven's is okay. So your motion's okay. So you're, you're going to actually, um, just, when it comes to Article Two, you're going to read it from this paper, not from the other.
Got it.
I think that works. Any comment from the moderator? Is that okay?
I will listen.
We're just going to read it from the paper, Robert, rather than from our.
From that individual, yeah, down.
From, yeah, we have a, we've got the new figures, and we'll just read the new figures. Okay. All right, any?
So, yeah, do you want me to just plant on speaking to one, two, three, or four?
Sure, people can read the motion if you want to speak to, to them, sure. Unless, Scott, you want to, do you want, or, John?
Which one?
Uh, any of them.
Any of the state ones?
Yes, you want to do any of the state ones? You certainly can. I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, I can, I can do the, um, operational if you'd like.
Just to, just to speak to it? Yeah.
You got to make sure that the first meeting, he gets recognized.
Oh, yeah?
Because when Robert starts.
Oh.
Because the guests have to be recognized the first time, right?
Oh, that's right, yeah, we have to recognize Scott first time?
Well.
Mr. Moderator?
Maybe we can do.
To the post first. Procedurally, don't, when we start the meeting, don't we have to recognize Scott as new town administrator to allow him to speak at town meetings going forward?
Yeah.
I thought, didn't you bring a crowd?
No, didn't. Um, okay, so, so Scott, you'd, you'd go ahead and speak to number two?
Two, yep.
Okay, all right. And then, John, why don't you do three?
Sure.
Three and four, if you want to speak to those.
Sure.
Everybody will read the motion, which is.
Then I'll go back, suppose, motion five and six, then take break.
Yeah, okay.
You're going to read motions five and six.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that works, everybody kind of there?
Okay, so Article five, three, we'll push back.
Yeah.
I'm on the side.
Yeah, you're going to read the seventh.
What do they want to do?
Dan is eight.
But.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, so who's going to speak in favor of number seven?
Uh, number seven is.
That's the budget.
The budget. I would think, I don't know, between Scott and Braden would be my thoughts.
Okay.
And I believe we have Brett here for water, and we've got Randolph for transfer.
Yep, we have you here.
We're going to be here.
And you'll address Article ten, Mr. Y.
Right, and then I'll, I'll speak to Article eleven. And then I'm, I'm assuming other people will stand up and speak to Article eleven, too.
Joy is reading, and we're responding.
Correct. You're going to be on firefighter's grant, number thirteen. I can speak to that one, I suppose, because.
No.
You can read, read the motion, and I can speak to it.
Ian will take your twelve.
Yep, should be.
Fire, the fire chief's going to be there for thirteen? I'll, you know, I'm just.
No, 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 he, he wasn't. I, I'll speak to that, unless he, well, unless he wants to, but I, he didn't have much to do with the grant.
It looked like three o'clock, and he had a emergency call. Yeah, I saw him, spark light house, yes.
Oh, really?
Cause I saw him pulling out like a cow. Even faster than icicles.
Uh, number fourteen.
So, oh, sorry.
Town hall maintenance.
Did, did we, did we get notified that we, we were successful there, Article thirteen? That's the, that's the pumper, isn't it?
Not yet, no, we don't have the results yet.
It's just conditional.
This is conditional. It's conditional upon acceptance of the grant, of, yeah, of the grant award. It's conditional. Yep, so town hall maintenance, uh, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
Wifi and IT improvements, Scott, you're going to pick that, okay? Transfers for salary, I think we were going to have.
Bradley.
Bradley do that one, okay? And then I think Francine is going to speak to the bylaws, pretty much. Pretty much gets us there.
Of Tullia.
Uh, zoning, I don't know, somebody from, Paul Deven is going to be here, but maybe, or somebody. Somebody from planning board, yeah. Uh, community preservation will carry their own, and then we get to the revolving fund for the health inspections and the limits of the last two. Who wants to?
I should do that, health, health inspections, revolving fund.
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, or Scott, or, Scott or John, lead him up, yeah.
Put the onus on, why we have to do this.
Yeah, yeah, just make it.
For the record.
Similar to, you know, electrical and plumbing funds and trying to do some cost recovery kind of. Anybody got any other questions? Does that sound reasonable? Steven?
Um, I'm just trying to track since we've bounced around.
Correct.
I'm reading motion thirteen, and then when doing it. Going to draw a tag.
No, no, you did that.
Thirteen, so fourteen, fifteen, sixteen goes back to you.
Thirteen, you're on sixteen.
Okay, cool.
And I think that's the end of your duty.
Right, you went so fast through the last. So even reading the motion, somebody else's got, like, um.
So like what?
CPA, CPA, CPA.
CPA, well, they'll do their own.
Their own motion.
They, they stand up and do theirs.
So slinging out sixteen, winning territory, and you'll say, Mr. Moderator, I make a motion, and then you read that one section, and I'll quickly second it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we'll.
I remember that from special training, and then I shut up.
So we'll just go down and up. Well, I mean, oftentimes, the next person who's going to speak would second it, but John seems to jump in. So if you could, you could do it, I would like to. You've got a lot of words, yes.
I'll observe my commentary for ours, like you can say.
Anybody got any questions about the warrant order, all set?
It's a big job.
All right.
Everyone who contributed.
Yeah, no, and thanks to for all the last-minute craziness that Bradley went through and, uh, managed to get the, the gods in our favor to.
Actually marrying for a house.
We were writing, writing language to not have free cash, but it came through at the end hour.
Four oh three, this section.
Little earlier, little earlier, but not much earlier, yes.
No, I was surprised to see the D L S even.
Yeah, so, I know, it's amazing. Okay, we will do better next year. I am bow to this. We are not going to go through this one again. Please, so. All right, I think we are okay. I think we're ready to maybe take a motion to, uh, no, we're not coming back. We're moving into town. Are we adjourned?
Select board will be all done.
We're, yeah, we're not coming back, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
All right. Joy, second. Joy's second. All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at six thirty-five.